Could everyone silence their cell phones and please stand for the Pledge and Legions?
The Pledge and Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mary Ann, could you do the roll? Okay, we have some recognition.
Recognitions, Tim's not here.
I can stand up there.
Somebody want to stand up and shake hands?
Yeah, I'll get up there.
Want me to read the names?
You can read the names.
Kristen, do you want to read names?
No.
He's going to be up there.
Alright, here we go.
Let me go around.
Mary Ann, do you want to read the names? I was officially demoted from this job because of my ability to pronounce names. The Rousher has won the National Yearbook Program of Excellence Award. This award was created to recognize those who excel in the creation and distribution of their yearbook. The following criteria must be met: a meaningful book for all students, a book in every student's hands, and an effective project management. We'd like to recognize the staff from the yearbook. Megan Koalas, Editor-in-Chief; Aaron Greyhan; Maura O'Brien; Joseph Raider Swallow; Kathleen Mahoney; Mary Padilla; and Allison Prash. Okay, let's hear it for the yearbook then. They're already working on next year's edition, which is why they couldn't be here right now. National Merit Scholarship Program. An RB student has been named a semifinalist in the 2018 National Merit Scholarship Program. He is one of approximately 16,000 high school seniors being recognized throughout the nation and will have the opportunity to compete for approximately 7,500 National Merit Scholarships offered next spring. At this time, we'd like to congratulate Joseph Kinnon. Congratulations, Joseph, and good luck. Joseph, do you have plans after college already? Have you made a choice?
Yeah, I want to do music education.
Okay, and you're looking at what schools?
Washington University, Orklaunster University, and like New York University.
Outstanding. Congratulations, Joseph. Good luck. And faculty, the following teacher has been accepted into a summer institute funded by the National Endowment for the Humanities Regarding Slavery in the Colonial North. She has also received full funding for our DonorsChoose.org project to receive fidgets for her students. Congratulations to Carolyn Thomas, that English teacher who's here with us tonight. Come on up. Carolyn, why don't you tell us about how you got the fidgets for everybody in your class?
So I filled out a DonorsChoose project and then I solicited people in the community and people who I knew to fund it.
And do you feel this is going to help instruction or?
It actually really has. There are bouncy bands that I put on the bottom of my desks and they're really helpful for, not just for students who have ADHD, but a lot of students really like to get their nervous energy out by using those.
I like it.
Yeah.
Can we get one for board chairs?
We can look into that.
Thanks, Carolyn. Congratulations. Let's hear it again for all of our staff and our students that we recognize tonight and thank you, everybody. Okay. We're on to superintendent's report or no, Student Association's report?
Yeah, Student Association reports.
Hi, everyone. This is the Student Association Executive Board for this year. We're all seniors and I'm Caitlin Gaynor, the President.
I'm Max Alvin, the Vice President.
I'm Claire Jacobs, I'm the treasurer.
I'm Alana Waugh, student spokesperson.
I'm Jane Frank, Director of Communications.
I'm Paulina Lenares and I'm the Secretary. Oh, so we had our freshman elections and they went really well and the freshmen seemed to be getting involved in the school a lot.
Last week, we also had homecoming. So the week leading up, we had a bunch of spirit days where people dressed up as like crazy things. We had like Tropical Day and Wild Wednesday where you could dress up as like someone on a safari or like in camo or something. And so we had a lot of participation with that and it was super great. And then on Friday, we had our pep rally, which went really, really well. Everyone was super into it, super loud when we were asking for the spirit contest. Like it went really well. And then Saturday night, we had homecoming, which was awesome. We decorated so well and everyone complimented us on it, not to toot our own horn, but it went so well. It was, everyone loved the theme and no one really had anything bad to say about it for the first time. It was great.
Great. How about the movie on the lawn? Wasn't that a big hit?
Yeah. It was a little, it was The Lion King. I know there was only like 150 students there. It was the first year and next year, there would definitely be more. This year, we also decided to publicize all of the small sports for our homecoming. So we've had a publicized volleyball, tennis, and soccer game that we can encourage all the sports to participate this year.
We also had the penny pinch during the week of homecoming. So how that works is pennies and dollar bills are positive for your grade and silver points are negative. So it counted up, it like counted up and finished in the end to count for spirit points and determines who wins the spirit bone at the pep rally. So that went on during the week with all the classes and we raised over $930 through that and through Girls Who Code, a game that they had during lunch. And that money is going to be used to be donated to a school in Houston that we have like a direct connection with.
Great.
Next Tuesday, October 3rd, the school's holding, I think, it's kind of like a Bulldog Challenge Day. They have these people coming. It's ironically called the Bulldog Solution for RB. And so there are a bunch of kids come out. Majority of us have signed up for it. And so we have next Tuesday.
I think Ms. Mate, how many students signed up for that?
Currently, we have around 300 and we're still finalizing the list. We have up to 400 spots for students.
And they're doing a little more than just coming out, right?
Yeah, it's a full day of leadership training and social emotional learning for students and the purpose is to improve school culture and climate and then to empower the students to become change agents. So these students that are participating are then committing to spreading this throughout the school and committing to spreading acceptance and tolerance and kindness long after next Tuesday. So we're really excited about it.
And I know that was in your description.
Yeah. And like related to that, this year, we started having school and culture and climate meetings with a lot of the top, like people in charge of clubs or just like from a variety of groups. So we had the first meeting probably three weeks ago on Thursday morning with Mr. Mannan and Ms. Gregor and we hope to have another one this week with other students involved.
When is the Bulldog Solutions Day?
Tuesday.
So maybe Mr. Skolnik will write a nice article about how the students saw all that new stuff they learned and a nice positive article. But what else you guys got to come up? Tell us.
Also, upcoming this year, we have, we're going to plan more spirit days to also increase like school spirit and like school culture and everything. And our fall blood drive is November 1st.
Is that right?
That's it.
Thank you.
Board have any questions? Good job, guys. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Alright, President has nothing to report on. Superintendent report?
Superintendent reports. Curriculum Advisory Council, we met back in August and we discussed, we went through the data and some of the stuff you're going to see tonight on AP, ACT, SAT, as well as the draft of the textbook reports. So the Curriculum Advisory Council saw that. Facilities Advisory Council hasn't met until we wrap up all the punch lists and we'll walk through the final projects to make sure everything's up to where we want before we sign off. The tennis courts and parking lot, we only have, we have one grading item that's being addressed on the punch list that's on the southwest side of the tennis courts. And then the section that is right by the visitors' bleachers off the parking lot, that's like the bioswale or rain garden, we're having it reconfigured to address the rate of flow into the sewer and we're going to put sod there instead of the wild plants because I think parents thought they were weeds at first and there were some things. So we're doing a little change order on that, but it will look very nice. I saw the change orders today and they'll be corrected. Hopefully it'll start this week, I think, right Scott? You talked about. In regards to Finance Advisory Council, we received this afternoon a draft of the audit, so I will send that off to the Finance Advisory Council. The Board usually receives the presentation on the audit probably at the Cow in October. The Personnel Advisory Council will update. And then Policy Advisory Council met before last Board meeting. And in tonight's packet, there's the press packet, which was a small policy packet. You'll see our few recommended changes for discussion. And those are all the items I have for the superintendent report.
Principal's report?
Last month, we recorded our first podcast, which is called Bulldog Insider. It's a monthly podcast that we just started, which is co-hosted with myself and Student Association President Caitlin Gaynor. Each month, we highlight upcoming important activities as well as interview a staff member to provide some additional insight, either with their responsibilities, upcoming events, or a new programming. So it's just another way to increase communication. It's currently on our homepage of our website on the bottom right and then we're also looking to have an app so that parents can download it directly from there as well.
Where's it being hosted right now?
I don't know the actual website that we're using, but it's a free website. And so we're using that and they have an app associated with it too. So we're looking to get the app up and running as well.
Okay.
Last week, prior to the homecoming game and dance, we also had an activity fair before school and during lunch periods on Thursday. It's a great event because it's all-student run and it fills up the atrium down below. And so we had a lot of student interest and we also have two new clubs this year. We have robotics and then some students are also really interested in bringing back the hip-hop club, which comes and goes based off of student interest. So we have students interested in that again as well. We have been busy sending out reminders to freshmen for required immunizations and physicals. Students that do not require, do not comply with this state requirement will be excluded from school on October 13th if they don't have that information by then. So we continue to notify parents every week who are out of compliance to hopefully get that number down so we don't have to exclude any students. Yes, it's very similar to last year. October 4th, so next Wednesday, is our first of two practice ACT tests for juniors. The second practice test is scheduled for January 23rd. And then this year, the official school-funded test is moved up a month, almost two months, and it'll be on February 27th. So this is just the first of two opportunities that all students will have to practice with that. Also coming up on October 14th, I know it seems early, but that's our eighth-grade placement test. So students must be currently living in district and have signed up through our student information system in order to be eligible to take this placement test. If they don't meet those requirements, we have other options for students later throughout the year. Lastly, before I forget, get to the reports, because I have three reports tonight, on October 30th, Representative Gutierrez is holding a town hall meeting here at 6:30. But prior to this, he's agreed to meet with a group of students at 5 o'clock. That's for RB students only. And so our Clarion sponsor, Mark Helgeson, along with our Social Studies Instructional Coach, who facilitates Model UN, Erin Cunningham, they've been busy planning that with the students, creating the format, coming up with a list of questions that they want to ask him. And so we'll soon be advertising it to all students. It is open to all students, but students that attend will need a signed parent waiver as he wants to be able to use some of, some pictures and videos on his social media. So students are really excited about that opportunity as well. Tonight, in your Board packet, there are three reports that fall under the Principal's report, all just for your information. So the first one is the transfer report. So I believe it's on page eight of your packet. And this report shows that we had a total of 76 students transfer in and 48 students transfer out. So for a net gain of 28 transfer students. Our projected enrollment this year was 1,645. Our current enrollment is 1,643. So we are very close. Of the 1,643 students, 18 of them are special education students that are enrolled in RB but don't physically attend school here. There are also 20 special education students that attend RB for transition services. So those are students that are 18 to 21 that come to receive some job and vocational training. So of the remaining 1,605 students, we have 427 freshmen, 379 sophomores, 398 juniors, and 401 seniors. We also do have four pending applications for new students. So I feel like when I report out on enrollment, it's ever in flux and it's constantly changing. So, but we are right around our projected enrollment for the school year.
So Scott did a good job predicting enrollment?
Correct.
Good job, Scott.
The next report is on page 10 and it's a summer school report. So this report is broken down by credit courses and non-credit courses. So teachers of credit courses and teachers of bridge courses are paid according to the contract rate while non-credit course opportunities such as band, TV, and camp college are based off of the revenue that they bring in minus expenses, which is very similar to the structure we have set up for athletic summer camps. So while we try to run cost neutral to the district, there was a miscalculation in the courses as we were calculating the final cost, which is why we're a little over budget and not completely cost neutral. We're also still waiting a $200 donation from Riverside for participating in the parade, which will lessen the amount that we're over to $669. We also have a plan in the future to try to receive that money upfront prior to participating in the parade as well. So there was a question about, you know, the waiving the $9,700 for student fees and only allocating $6,000 to Title I. And so for the past four years, we always allocate the money from Title I's that we run exactly cost neutral, even if those amounts don't add up because we do generate some revenue from US Gov, for example, and some other courses. So we plan on, you know, giving ourselves a little bit of a cushion next year. Unfortunately, we can't go back and correct it and add more Title I money to that because it's based off of last year's Title I money and that year-end report was already submitted. But we will be mindful of that next year.
So if the revenue, is this, instead of, is it supposed to be 31,480 instead of 25 in the total?
Because you're adding, he's adding the 6,000 from Title I, right?
Well, I just.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Well, if not, there's a mistake in the balance.
No, the 6,000 was not added to the 25. It should have been. Other questions on that report?
I think that's all that was submitted, right?
Correct. And then on page 11, I believe, we have the summer camp report for athletics. So each camp runs cost neutral to the district. There is a $12 fee per camper, which is included in the overall cost for the camp. Of this $12, $5 goes to facilities, $5 goes to pay the trainer, and $2 goes to cover the training supplies. And Scott has, there was a question submitted about, I believe, the tracking of it to make sure we run cost neutral and what that looks like. So Scott has two examples that he'll pass out.
I made two examples for the Board that I'd like to share with them. These camps obviously are kind of on the discretion of the coach who's running it.
Thank you.
So I did football and volleyball.
Do we have anything for, put on screen?
This is submitted on Monday, so we're just pulling it together. So the sheet on top, Scott?
The sheet on top is the tracking sheet that is submitted by the Assistant Principal of Athletics, who works closely with the business office on making sure that the revenue numbers are correct and the expense numbers are correct. On there, before anything is processed for payment, I double-check in our financial software program what the revenue that was generated matches what is on their revenue line on top. The issue with some of the things that come up is the fees are different depending on the camps. So certain levels have $110, say, and then another level maybe $125. It does vary on the report that you're going to see.
So this is a lot of paper for the Board just to receive it from, but more or less, what I asked Scott to pull, the sheet with the boxes is the tracking document that the athletic director and the head coach for that sport use to monitor all their expenses and cross-check with the business office. Like for the volleyball, then you have eight or 10 additional sheets. That's the school district's DCR program that's in the business office that checks all the checks they receive or online payments they receive so that the number on the one sheet is in sync with the number that the district actually has money in hand for.
Yes.
So that the, you know, you can't, I think the question was just they wanted to make sure that things, we say they're running cost neutral, that there's a checks and balance system or an internal control system in place that runs the numbers against each other to make sure they're running cost neutral.
Yes.
And so we provided two examples. We have actually all of this paper for every single.
Every single camp that's out there. You have the rosters. All the camps are filled out online. That was new this summer. The majority, I'd say 95% of the parents that did the camps were more than willing to do the online registration on it. We also had computers available in the business office for those that didn't have a computer that came in and registered right in the business office on it and made payment.
And so the Board is aware, like one of the things, we give this report, it started probably, Gary and Tim could probably help, I would say five, six years ago, but the idea was when I first got here as a superintendent, the summer camps, the coaches were running their summer camps, they were collecting the money for their summer camps and then, you know, dispersing it accordingly to their coaches. And then all of a sudden, in my first year, we got to August or September and we had all these outstanding purchase orders. And so we realized that all the money was already collected and spent before anybody paid for the basketballs they ordered or t-shirts they ordered or the cones they ordered. So now we put in place that basically the district sits on the money, they use this cross-check sheet and it works through Scott and the business office and the athletic directors. And then we don't, we only pay the coaches out once and that's in August or September when we verify that all expenses have been paid and all POs have been closed. And so the question, as I stated earlier, was just showing that we have two separate records, so the money that we're collecting in the business office reflects what's on the sheet.
Thank you.
Okay? Good job, Scott. Were there any other questions on summer camps out, Scott? Nope? Okay. Do you want to, oh, we got ACT anyways, as I say.
Yeah, District, no, we got District.
Yep. Kristen's Assistant Principal, Kylie Gregor, Kylie Linquist, who was recently married over the summer. Our Assistant Principal of Curriculum Instruction is here and her and Kristen will go through all of the academic data. This will be the last goal report that the district will receive this fall. This concludes all the reports on all the Boards' goals for the district and Kristen and Kylie will bring you up to speed on that data.
So the first thing that I'm going to go over with you is the, just a breakdown of the academic achievement, school culture goals pertaining to academic performance. The first one being our composite ACT goal. District sets the goal at 26, being the composite average for the graduating class. As you can see in your packet right under that, the class of 2017 ended up with a final score of a 22.6. If you take a look, when we're talking year-over-year of the past six years, you're seeing, I think, a pretty consistent trend. The information that I think is most valuable is what's directly underneath it in that e-Pass Growth section where you're able to see year-over-year from 2013 where we take our students. So essentially, this is what we do with our students while they're here. Average explore to ACT growth for a student who enters high school as college-ready, considered college-ready, is five points from that eighth-grade explore test to the junior year. Students who enter high school considered at-risk or not meeting benchmarks on their explore test, that expected growth is 3.9 from the explore to the junior year. Sitting at a 5.9, looking at what we grew our students in the class of 2017 from their explore in eighth grade to their ACT in a junior year is something that is consistent, more or less, over the last five years and it's something that I think is very significant when we're looking at typically roughly a third of our students coming in not considered college-ready based on their explore scores. So despite that number of students who are coming to us not considered college-ready by the standards, being able to exceed that five points of expected growth from explore to ACT is something that I think is very significant.
Can you stop there?
Yes.
Why is five expected? I went through this before and Gary keeps bringing it up and keep asking us to spend more money, get more teachers, because this is going to improve. And 5.9, it's right in the middle of what we thought was.
Five is what is expected from the ACT. So ACT sets their benchmarks, so all of our.
But that's the average in the whole country then, right?
It's not the average. It's what they, that's what they say a typical student should grow.
Oh, why?
From eighth grade to junior year. I think they take a look at what the coursework looks like in comparison to what is reflected on each of the tests. I mean, I can't speak for ACT in terms of why they selected that.
Well, that's the problem. We've been asked to do things with our goals, to put money, et cetera, and our expectation is to be better. And we keep coming back to ACT sets five and nobody can say why ACT thinks five is right or if it's an average or what it is. So I don't know how much credibility we should put in ACT says five is good and if we're better than that, we're good. But we expect, what we thought we were, is that we would show continuous growth. And as Gary said many times, for our, you know, 22.6, 22.5, 23.3, 22.1, 22.6, it really don't seem like we're improving the ACT.
For me, as an educator, the story is in the growth. When you look at a third of a class coming in under benchmark, to what significance, I think, varies. And we are exceeding what the authors of the e-Pass suite say is expected growth for a typical child throughout their development in terms of what sort of agreed-upon curriculum is, I see a different story.
Is this growth of five associated with the overall average of 16.7? Because I thought that if you have an eighth-grade class coming in at 20, they can grow at 6, 6-plus. I mean, isn't the Hinsdells of the world getting their kids coming in at about a 19, 20 and their growths are averaging 6, 6.5?
I would.
Because their average ACT is 6, 26, 26.5, isn't it?
Right. I think we would be hard-pressed to find, honestly, a lot of school districts with students that are coming in that high in terms of college readiness publishing their growth scores.
I would also add.
Well, Hinsdale Central had it at one point. That's where the basis of this.
We have some general, Kristen could speak a little bit.
Kristen has some information on that.
I would also add the explore is a limited test, so students can top out at the explore. So at schools like Hinsdale Central and Stevenson, they will have a significant portion of their eighth-grade students coming in receiving perfects. So that's why it's easier to say that those kids grew eight or nine points because they're limited. They top out at a 25. You know, we have classes and I don't, I can't speak, you know, to specific years, but we have classes where no one comes in receiving a perfect. And so those students aren't necessarily going to gain eight or nine points because they're not topped out. So the students out of Hinsdale Central or at Stevenson that come in at a 25, they're really higher than that. It's just the explore is limited and a 25 is the best that they can do. Also, took some time to look back at, you know, Hinsdale Central's scores for the past 10 years and they have stayed very consistent at a 26. And then you look at Hinsdale South, which is very similar to our demographics and in terms of how ready the students are when they enter high school. And theirs has been very consistent at a 22.
South.
Hinsdale South. So the same, you know, a school within the same district. So I think that speaks. So I think that speaks, you know, volumes to how difficult it is to move an average ACT score for a school. And so, you know, I think when we're looking at growth, it's easy to achieve that growth when you have students topping out at a test versus, you know, students who come in and we don't have a single student receiving a perfect. There's also some, there used to be some research studies, I was trying to find them online quickly right now, that kind of explained the e-Pass growth as to five points, but the, I mean, the general rule of thumb is the explore benchmark is set at 16. The ACT college readiness benchmark is set at a 21. So it's five points of growth is expected because if a student comes in at a 16, to get to 21 is five points. So it's also related to, that five points of expected growth is related to where the benchmarks are set.
Okay.
I'd ask, you know what, why don't you guys go through your report, but I'm going to come back to Tim's question because I think I understand why he's asking and I want to enlighten the board a little bit about our discussion last week, but why don't you get through your report first and then we can come back to that.
Okay. If we continue on and we look at my second performance indicator of the college readiness benchmarks, you can see that I have listed there, the district goal is to be, have 100% of our graduating class meeting each of the college readiness benchmarks set by ACT. And those college benchmarks, college readiness benchmarks indicate a 50% likelihood that a student will receive a B or higher in a credit-bearing college-level course in the first semester and the, a 75% chance that a student will get a C or higher in the corresponding college-bearing course, credit-bearing course in college. So that's kind of where the college readiness benchmark is pointing us in the direction. If you take a look at 2017, you can see that we're not at that 100%, 100% average, but you can also see, which I think is important, the year-over-year average, we're growing in each of our areas, composite all the way through science, as well as outperforming significantly the state in several of those. So we are continuing our efforts to make sure that we have more of our students college-ready by the time they leave us regardless of where they come to us. So those are how those numbers add up.
So this historical data on the bottom chart somewhat disputes the comment that maybe the board heard last week or two weeks ago that scores have gone down?
Yes. And we have some more, we have some additional information to speak to that right after we get through the performance indicators to kind of show a more comprehensive picture of the, to refute that point.
But the same point, over the five years, 2017 was in the middle. Yes, it was an improvement over last year, but last year was one of our worst years. So it's still the same kind of question asked before. We go up, we go down. We're in the middle for the five years.
We are.
Last year was our performance. So again, then you ask yourself, if we're doing all these things and we're just coming up in the middle, would we just be in the middle if we weren't doing all these things?
I think we should save that question until we get through.
I want to make sure I'm asking them as they're coming so that.
But that question is what I asked that we go back to because that's exactly what I want.
But again, it's a second study statistics that we're publicly saying we had a good year, but if you look at five years, it was an average year compared to the five years before.
I think we have to consistently remind ourselves, as we do as educators, that we are educating the students that come to us. And we are, it's very easy to expect that we're going to be able to grow leaps and bounds every year, over year, because we want to keep increasing, increasing, increasing. But we get, we educate the kids we receive and wherever they are is where we meet them and then we do our best to pull them up to that level. But we aren't a unit district, we have no control over the students that come to us or what curriculum they receive or how ready they come to us. So I think that's something that we have to.
But I don't have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is the presentation is, we had a really good year. Now we're explaining, you know, we take who we get and for that group we had a good year, but for the district, for a five year, it was an average year, right?
Well, my, I mean, my take on it is that, not saying categorically it was a really good year, but noting the fact that we are increasing in every single area. I think that's something.
We're not increasing, that's my point. We are not increasing every year at all. We increased over last year. If we were increasing every year, the five-year trend would be like that. It's not. Compared to last year, we increased. Last year, we went down in every category. So when we make the public statement, we're increasing in every, compared to what? Last year.
Last year.
We aren't, increasing means a trend and we don't have a trend of increasing for a five-year history. So that's why I'm bringing it up while we're discussing it instead of waiting until later. I think it's incorrect to make the statement, we're increasing in every category.
Okay.
But I wouldn't say we're decreasing.
I didn't say we're decreasing.
Which was, was one of the comments that I read in the paper and that was made is that we're not decreasing. I think the growth we're showing is consistent each year from where these kids come in as eighth graders to where they leave as seniors, the growth's consistent, some years better than others. The reason I circled your question and asked to save it for the end is I had the conversation with the administration last week of, as the board's beginning to discuss budget and deficits, some of our board members may ask, well, for the last four years, we've been trying to lower class sizes in core subjects, but over the last four years, we've somewhat maintained consistent on. So exactly what you mentioned earlier, would we be getting these same scores if we weren't raising class, lowering class sizes in core subjects?
Right.
Or is there something we should be dedicating money towards in the budget that maybe would address incoming eighth graders? You know, maybe we set a standard with the board so that if incoming eighth graders aren't at a certain reading level on the explore or on the PSAT, we now require them to take a reading course or something, right?
Right.
So I understand where your question's coming from, those conversations have started with Kylie and Kristen and myself.
But I think more importantly, we can't say the trend is improvement because that's not what the trend is.
Okay.
And I think that's misleading to tell that to the public. And that.
That's fair.
Going to the conversation we're having, that, you know, so I'm sorry.
Yeah, but Tim, we don't also have all the information because we're looking at a mean and because it's a mean, if we had the majority of students doing well, if we were to look at all their dots on a chart and we just had a pocket of students doing very poorly, it would pull the mean down disproportionately.
And we don't know if that's true or not.
We don't know.
That's why we use averages.
Right.
This is why we set the goals and we report on these goals.
Right. But because we don't have that information on what's happening within us, because means are not a good indication of progress because it just averages everything. So you could have 75% of the student body, if we were to cut off that lower quartile, maybe you would see that growth you're looking at, we might have a lower quartile or a 25% pocket that's so low that they're pulling that down and so you're getting a different picture.
Do we have any evidence that this, that's true, Laura?
Well, we don't, but we don't have any evidence, it's not true until.
Except for one thing.
But here.
What they're reporting to us and what they're telling the public is this report. And this is what we can react to.
Laura, they brought the data here.
Yes.
It's their, it's their story to tell us.
Yes.
If that's truly the case, wouldn't they have come through and said, there is a population in this particular, this dragged us may down, but year after year, we've seen the consistent growth, up and down, up and down?
Well.
We've seen the consistency.
I think it is in the data. When you go through it and you look at some of the feeder schools and being the professionals they are with our feeder schools, I think there is evidence in the charts that were in our board packet.
So the question comes in February when we're talking about staffing, should we say, it doesn't matter what the school does staffing-wise because if we constantly get in from the feeders, a 16, 17 preparedness, even when we had lower, when we had greater class sizes, we achieved the same level of growth. So the last three years of commitment to shrink these class sizes hasn't done anything to increase the growth in here.
Well, I think.
So should we go back to what we did until the feeders figure out how they can improve their readiness?
Well, I think maybe as a board, we need to cut our, you know, our staff come and they're trying to present this and we keep saying, well, you're not growing as a whole. Maybe we need to say, okay, maybe split it out and show us if there is a group that's growing like you expect it and pull it out.
We probably can provide that information because I think ACT on our end-of-the-year report gives us how many students, broken down by score. So we might be able to show how many students were in the lowest quartile and how that impacted their average. We'd have to break that down, it might take us a little time to put together.
I do also think that's an important discussion to have as this is our last year of ACT and we're looking at, I'm assuming we'll be setting new district goals with the SAT. I think that's an important conversation to have as to what specific goals do we want to set for SAT? Do we want to just set averages or do we want to look at percent of students meeting benchmarks or a different metric that maybe is a little more informative or do a combination of both?
Or some kind of growth goal, right?
Correct.
May I add something here? Just a quick Google search on this, explore to ACT growth, and guess what comes up? Hinsdale. So I'd encourage the board members, High School District 86, it gives these nice graphs and they're split up by quintile, 20%.
Mm-hmm.
And they give graphs, central historical, central previous year, US average growth, which I think is the five. But remember, there's like four different categories of the ACT that's tested. I was wondering if the staff could mimic this graph and prepare this graph so we can have a direct comparison to, say, Hinsdale South. It sort of disaggregates the data.
We are there. Hinsdale South is with the 22, like we are.
I don't want the 22, if you look at this website, you understand what I'm talking about.
You wanted to see how many, how many students we have scoring in the top quintile.
So I'm assuming Hinsdale's done their homework.
We can work on it. Let us look into that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so John, if we were to report on the different quartiles, the top quartile, the two middle and the bottom, or as three populations almost, I think you would see different growth patterns.
Well, this little blurb at the top of this actually talks about ACT, whatever they use, what is it? Right, they actually design programs targeted to the specific groups of students. So like, if Hinsdale South can do it, we can do it. That's my opinion.
They do and Hinsdale South has had the same consistent 22 average for 10 years.
Here's the problem, our data isn't disaggregated, it's hard for us to figure it out, we should disaggregate it. Like you said about the means, that distorts everything.
Right, and it will help show a clearer picture.
And with the SAT, those reports are, those reports are much easier to gather.
From, they come more that way, right, from the company?
Yes, from the college board. Correct.
We can break it down and send it out to the board Friday afternoon.
Today's preparation discussion, you presented data to us, so we can only react to and discuss what you presented or how you explain it to us, do you agree?
Yes, and the data we're presenting is aligned to the, to the district goals. So that's the data that we have chosen to report out on.
And your comments are not often that what you see here is up in, you know, more of a flat pattern, that's over five years, that's true.
Actually, the best year we ever had was in 2013 before we started reducing the class by far in growth.
That was the first year we reduced class size, or started to reduce class sizes.
Yeah.
Yeah, but I, I would want to actually correlate that number to the transfers then and see what that, what that actually, the data that you presented just before of the ins and outs look like as compared to this chart, because I think that would also help tell the story.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Kylie, why don't you move on? Does that cover, what's your next, e-Pass growth, you were covering that?
Yes. So the second half of the college readiness report is the e-Pass growth by subject, so you can take a look at where we grew each student on the ACT subject area tests. So 6.9 in English, 6.2 in math, 7.4 in reading and 5.0 in science over.
So this was our best year in science?
Yes.
Best year in reading.
As well as.
Second best year in math?
Yes.
And second best year of the tide for second in English.
Yes. And again, I reiterate that I think this, this is the best way to get at what we're doing with our students when we have them in the building, is to look at the actual growth scores in e-Pass.
Why is the, this is, we just explained first or second best year in every category. Why wasn't our growth on the other chart the second best?
Well, English was down 0.6 points, so that had from class of 2013 to 2017. So I'm assuming that that had a significant impact.
Yeah.
That's why averages sometimes can be tough.
Right. Yeah, but we were at or higher than the class of 2015. That's the one I was really asking the question about. The class of 2015 had a 6.1 growth and 2017 only had 5.9 and 2017 beat the growth of 2015 in every category but one at a time, and so why?
Our percentage of kids coming in below benchmark though might have been.
The class of 2015 had a much higher.
Explorer score.
Score coming in.
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a question submitted about whether or not the plans to increase performance on the ACT were consistent with the plans that we made last year. The answer to that question is yes. We are right now in a world where our data moving forward on the state report card is going to be reported in terms of SAT. So our current seniors, our class of 2018, will not have SAT as their benchmark as far, or not have ACT as their benchmark as far as the state is concerned. So right now, as we're putting time and energy into working to make that transition for our students and the SAT becoming the high stakes test by which schools are measured now, in the state of Illinois, we're transferring a lot of the efforts to that SAT and educating our staff on the SAT and looking at the skills that our students are required to perform on the SAT. So we have not put in any major changes to the plan to increase ACT as this is the last year that we will be giving it.
I have a question for you, Kylie. So like, when I take my, when I took my kids to the doctor when they were younger, right, the doctor was looking on the growth chart to see if they were always making consistent growth, because if they were like in the 90th percentile one visit and then in the 50th percentile another, that could be an indicator of something bad. So like, these are all like 20, the class of, but are, do we know if the classes are actually making kind of consistent growth their whole time through their four years? You know what I'm saying?
From eighth to ninth.
From, like, looking at the class of 13, say, as freshman, sophomore, junior, senior, looking at them over those four years to see if they're making, like, are we.
Or if there's a jump in one year of the, is that what you're saying?
Right, like, I'm feeling like, like, this is kind of, I don't know if that same, like, because my son.
Because they're different kids.
These are kind of apples to oranges, you know what I'm saying? Like, are we seeing that classes are kind of making, classes making consistent growth?
Every freshman year.
Ev, well, no, no, no. When I'm a freshman, when I'm a sophomore, when I'm a junior, when I'm a senior, am I, am I making?
You can look for that.
So then, what are you saying? You read that chart like sideways?
No, eighth grade, then you have the 10th grade, then you have the junior, then you have the senior, so you can see the growth.
So what page is that?
That's the, that's where we showed the e-Pass growth, 5.9.
What page is that?
What is that back?
Mouse over right here.
Kylie, I just.
14.
Kylie.
So go to page 14.
I just emailed you the link of what he.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Dr. Keane is the.
So one back, page 14.
Yes, so you can see right under that composite ACT indicator.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed that.
The only one that doesn't work is that 10th grade year for the class of 2017 because that was when the plan was gone.
Okay, gotcha, sorry.
That's good.
All right, and so, and we've also been using, this should become easier to track their trend growth under the new PSAT suite because the state pulled the plan test, then we were using retired plan test.
Yes.
And retired explore, so that'll become a little easier under SAT.
It's so hard. Let's.
And the suite is. But that's what's tough, I mean, and I think, honestly, I think what Dr. Keane's asking for will actually help tell a story because when you break it out by quartiles, you may see the class of 2013 had a large quartile that maybe had, you know, 30 to 36 on the ACT.
Sure.
No, their class had that, so that's going to draw up their average, right, or draw up their composite. So by disaggregating that, that will help explain it a little better and we can work on that.
But isn't.
Can I ask, do we, what kind of articulation do we do with the feeder schools? I mean, wouldn't it behoove us to really maybe beef up the articulation so that we can have maybe a little bit more control over what, you know, how the students come to us?
Yes, and that's something that we meet as an entire faculty with our feeder school counterparts. Currently, once every year, we organize an institute day so that we line up with our feeder schools and they come over for a full articulation. And they come over for a full articulation session, and we break them up in departments. Last year when we did that, we had PSAT data that we were able to share so that we are able to actually go in, and I went in question by question on every single portion of the test so that departments could look at actual questions, actual skills. So that we can then say, okay, this percentage of our incoming freshmen missed these types of questions. So we're able to, with PSAT data, get much more finite into that pinpointing of the actual skills that the students are missing.
Do teachers ever have an opportunity, like eighth grade teachers, to come here and observe in math class? And then high school teachers going to feeder schools to observe in eighth grade classes?
We've talked about the high school teachers going to the feeder schools. They have in the past, but they have, it's been a while. And there's been, you know, new teachers that teach freshmen, so we have talked about that as well. And then the principals meet twice a year as well to articulate. And I will say, you know, the challenge of not being a unit district too is that the, the three feeders, as much as we can suggest things, you know, the three feeder schools are three very different schools with different students that come to those schools and have different varying needs. So what works for one feeder school might not work for another school. And so they're often doing different things in order to meet the needs of their students. So that can pose a challenge for us.
We've made some progress, so I think ninety, is it ninety-six and ninety-four both doing Carnegie Math? Or ninety-four?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six, and ninety-four is considering it, but they're still working through something. We've also shifted ninety-six and ninety-four, they're both going to Chromebooks. Ninety-six is on Chromebooks, ninety-four is going to Chromebooks. So I mean, we've had some conversation, I mean, it will help if we can get our math and reading curriculums aligned because those are the two biggest things on the state assessment.
Correct.
But ninety-five didn't adopt the Carnegie Math?
They did not.
So right there, there's a significant difference. There's been a difference, and that difference has only expanded.
We only have one of three right now that have adopted Carnegie Math. The superintendent at ninety-four was the assistant superintendent at ninety-six when he adopted Carnegie Math. So now he's working with the staff at ninety-four to adopt, eventually moved to Carnegie Math, or something similar. And so we're, and so we're working with District ninety-five. And they meet with us, and their math scores right now are hanging steady. So it's not that it's, you know, but it's not as easy, like Kristen's saying, to shift three different school districts with three different. Boards. Student populations, right? So we're working on that.
That's why I gotta beef up that. We gotta beef up our talk on becoming a unit district. Time to get going.
All right, we ready to move on to AP?
So the AP indicator represents a hundred percent of our AP students with at least one score greater than a three. Three is considered a passing score by College Board. Class of 2017 had seventy-eight point one percent of students earning a three or higher on at least one test. During that, for that class of 2017, we had five hundred and eighty-five total AP students. So we're looking at about four hundred and fifty-six of them roughly earning at least one three on their scores. We sort of do a balancing act, I think, when it comes to AP because we have a goal. One of my local goals is to increase enrollment in AP while at the same time increasing the scores in AP. And so what's interesting about that is the more students that you bring in, and you are open access, which is one hundred percent the College Board's message. Anyone takes an AP course, no one is excluded regardless of their performance in the past. We are excited when we get new students who have never taken an AP course to take one. When you do that, you run the risk that your scores could take a hit for that. So it's a balancing act, and it's always going to be a balancing act with AP. Last year, for the class of 2017, we were able to bring in forty-four new AP students who had never taken an AP test. And that translated to a hundred and one additional exams that our students were taking. So as a building, we're taking, you know, we have thirteen hundred exams that our students are taking and passing sixty-eight percent of those. We had some, I like to tell some unique success stories in particular courses. English literature, for example, had their highest pass rate since 2012, and they increased their pass rate twelve percent over the previous year. So we have some, some good things that are going on. AP European history, an increase in seventeen percent over their previous year. So we are continuing to grow our pass rate while we are continuing to add students. And that's something that we are proud of. When you look, there was a question submitted with concern about our science score. Kristen and I did kind of a deeper data dive today to take a look at that specifically. We did have a couple of AP courses last year in science whose pass rates went down. But what we're seeing when we take a look at those is we also increased pretty significantly in those classes, both the number of students that were taking them and then the number of students that were sitting for the exam. So for example, there were two classes at least last year that ran two sections of AP that this year only are running one. So we don't know if last year was an anomaly in the amount of students that were taking a particular test because we've gone, you know, one section in the first year I was here, then to two sections last year, and then to one section again this year. So we, we feel pretty confident that we are seeing in science specifically, and science is one of our smaller AP numbers wise. We don't have as many students taking science AP tests as we do, say, our macro-micro students or that really boost our social studies number. So you're talking about a smaller population of kids. But relatively, you're talking about growing the number of kids that are in those courses and taking those exams. And I think that that is very reflective of kind of the dual goal that we, that we try to accomplish with AP. When you look at AP equity and excellence, our district goal is that seventy percent, seventy-five percent of our graduating class will have passed one AP exam at some point during their high school career. Our class of 2017 was sitting at fifty-two point eight. So fifty-two point eight percent, over half of our seniors that graduated in 2017, took at least, took and passed at least one AP exam at some point during their high school.
That's good data Kylie, thank you.
When we look at plans to increase our AP scores, we have invested this year in an online AP preparation program called Albert. And several of our classes are using that resource with AP questions and AP material and content from all thirty-one of the AP tests. We also have given pilot licenses to all of our AP teachers who have not adopted that currently for their students. And we are looking to make that something that is available to all of our students next year. So every student who is in an AP course of any kind next year will have access to this online website that has full test prep and content in all thirty-one courses. So I'm a student and I take five different AP courses, I have them all right there. Next year, every student will have that resource. We also, from one of our instructional coaches who happens to be a graduate from RB, I reached out to our leadership team and I said, hey, what are some ideas about how we can increase our experience in AP? We want more students to have the AP experience. And she recalled a time when she was in high school and the administration and some of the AP teachers brought together a group of students who teachers had identified as having the potential to go into AP. And our SAT data actually provides a column that says AP potential. So based on SAT scores, you can track AP potential for a student. And she talked about how they came into the alumni lounge and they had a big pizza lunch, and they talked about AP, and teachers and students that were currently working in AP classes got to tell these students who had never taken an AP class what that's like and what sort of supports there are and what sort of experiences. And she remembers that to this day as being something that really significantly impacted her, and it's the reason why she went into AP micro-macro. So that's something that we're going to do with our students this year. Bring them together and be able to put teachers and students who have been successful in AP in front of them and look at them and say, we believe in you, we think you can do this. Let's try it, let's stretch it. Because we want students to have, we believe in that experience, and we want students to have that experience. Not one of the district goals, but something that I'm reporting out on are the SAT scores because we have them from that graduating class, or I'm sorry, beginning with the current seniors. So as I mentioned earlier, our state report card is now going to report SAT data. So we are going to be looking at a different set of numbers. We're going to be looking at inservicing our staff and educating them on a different set of standards and a different test. All of the data on the, on the next two pages represents what our students did with what I would consider a limited exposure to the SAT. Our district goal was still tied to ACT, our state report card was still tied to ACT when all of these numbers come in. And if you take a look at SAT composite and section scores, the SAT is scored out of a sixteen hundred. And the SAT doesn't publish a composite benchmark. So they publish section test benchmarks, but they don't, they don't publish a composite benchmark. So we look at our average score of a ten seventy-eight, but we don't have anything from the ACT that says this is in line. We do for the two section tests, for evidence-based reading and writing, the SAT benchmark of a four eighty. And our district average was a five forty-nine, so exceeded that benchmark. And the math at a five thirty benchmark, and we were right there at a five twenty-nine.
What does the benchmark mean? What do you mean by SAT benchmark?
So the SAT benchmark is relative to the way that ACT also is. So they're saying that a student meeting benchmark has a seventy-five percent of.
Ten thing total.
Yeah, seventy-five percent of a C, of earning a C in a pride-bearing course. And then if you look down at the bottom where we see the SAT benchmark data in terms of the percent of our students who are meeting benchmarks, we're looking at forty-nine percent who met both. And then on that evidence-based reading and writing, a seventy-six, and a math, fifty percent. The number that, that I am drawn to when I look at this is the teacher part of me who sees that twenty-seven, twenty-three percent of students who didn't meet either of those. We know, we've identified those students, there are sixty-eight of them. And one of the things that we are able to do with the data that SAT provides, which is kind of a win for us with the state switching over, is I am able to go in, I'm able to pull their transcripts, I'm able to pull their schedules, I'm able to pull their grades. So I now can look at the sixty-eight students in our building who didn't meet either benchmark, and I'm able to look at their course-taking patterns. I'm able to look at where they came in when they were with us. And I'm able to create a profile of what does a student who's not meeting either one of these benchmarks look like? So then we are able then to say, okay, now what do we do? And we're able to put that, that plan in place. So that is something that is greatly beneficial to us in having the kind of data that SAT presents because within a click of a button, I have those students. And they're no longer twenty-three percent on a spreadsheet. They're kids, and I can see their names, and I know where to find them. And I can take a look at their academic history, and we can look at how we better support them. Dr. Singus mentioned that we are in conversations about what are we going to do now? We're transitioning to SAT, so we're going to have new goals that reflect SAT. And we're also going to have to identify the resources that we're going to need to be able to make our students ready for that test, college-ready based on that SAT. We're starting now with some of the steps that really need to take place on a, on a global level. We have a representative from College Board coming in on Monday who's going to talk directly to our teachers, answer those questions about what does the new SAT look like? What are the skills that are identified? He's going to spend the entire afternoon with us so that he can meet with teachers on their lunches. He can meet with administrators and our CAP coordinator. He can meet with our counselors, and then he's also going to meet with our instructional and literacy coaches. So we have four separate meetings set up for him so that we have the instructional leaders in the building able to ask those questions and really get a firm grasp on what are the skills we're talking about? How do we best appropriately read the data and apply the data to what we're doing in our classrooms? We've also designed our October Institute around SAT, and we just presented this to our Leadership Council today. When I taught test prep for ten years, the first thing that I did, when I was teaching other teachers how to do it, was make them take the test that they were going to have their students sit for. And that's an eye-opening experience. And I think that it's where we start. And so we're talking today in our Leadership Council meeting about what does that look like? So that our teachers are able to feel what that feels like and really truly know, not in theory, but in practice, on paper right in front of you, what that test looks like. So we're going to be focusing on that at our Institute Day and then providing teachers an opportunity to get some professional development on a rotating basis from different experts in our building on skills and support that will build students' capacity on that test that they are working on. I also want to mention, because I think it's a really, I think it's really good work. One of our literacy coaches has been working with all of the released SAT practice tests and going into them and pulling out questions and passages that relate to each of the content areas in the building and making those available for teachers in an archive. So I'm a history teacher, and I want to know what kinds of history questions are reflected in the SAT so that I have that base of knowledge, and I can start to think that way, and I can start to get my students to think that way. And she has been, she spent a lot of time archiving that and pulling that out so that it's ready-made and it's quickly and quickly accessible for our teachers. I think that's, that's been some really good work.
Kylie, one of the things I think the board, especially some of the board members that are in their second term, I think are wanting to hear is exactly when I, when I touched on Tim's question, and we'll get to that at the end. So now with SAT, we've identified those sixty-eight kids. If we see that there's a common pattern in those sixty-eight kids, whether they were low in reading, low in math, or they, they didn't take a specific course as freshmen that all the other kids did that met the benchmark.
That's how we decided where we found.
I think that's what the board is wanting to hear, is like, okay, well, what's our next, what's our next strategy that we're going to commit to, to help close this achievement gap that we have from when they're leaving eighth grade until they graduate? And so, you know, whether it's a change in our graduation requirements or our placement marks, you know, our values, or where we say, hey, if you're not at this point on the PSAT in eighth grade, you're going to be required to take a reading course, or you're going to be required to take this math course. I don't know, that's why I leave that up to you and Kristen. But I think Tim's question, and some of the other questions we fielded from the board in the past, is they just want to see the efforts that we're requesting in the budget are having a direct correlation to the progress that they're seeing through this data. And so that was a great example of how you broke it down to sixty-eight kids. And it goes to your quartile question of, okay, we know sixty-eight kids, is twenty-three, is twenty-three percent of sixty-eight kids? And they scored at this. And now we see that none of those kids took this course or, or lacking. They all had a consistent variable on the PSAT as eighth graders. So now we maybe change graduation requirements so anybody else in the future that has that, maybe they're required to take this intervention course or, or have, you know.
It gives us the ability.
Academic support, right?
It gives us the ability to analyze how we're allocating our resources and funnel those resources to the appropriate place based on actual student experiences, absolutely.
The board at some point is going to want to say, hey, you're requesting this in the budget on an annual basis. Or we're seeing this expense go up on an annual basis. We want to make sure that the reward is reached, you know, is, is being met with the expenditures that we're spending. That's all.
Yes.
What is it? Good for the board, is that what you're?
I mean, it looks like you've done a lot of work, lots of plans and goal points, and that's great. But I just want to make sure everyone gets credit appropriately for actually the improvement. So we have to, we have to measure the outcomes appropriately. It seems like, just like, I just read this article today about stats in baseball. They're tracking basically everything, looking for areas of improvement. I mean, it's happening everywhere. So I'm glad to hear that's what you're doing. And if it's, maybe it is worthwhile to spend the money to get this data, but we need to prove.
We are already paying a consultant to get the data for us.
It's only going to get better with SAT.
Yeah, but here's the, here's the real struggle I have. If one of it is the way we presented, we can't tell people there's a trend when there's not a trend. That just annoys me. I mean, it just, you guys talk about analyzing all this data and knowing what it is. And if you're showing five years of data and it's going up and down and up and down, there's not a trend of it going up. And we need, and we need to understand that because the other thing, what did we find out in the budget this year? We talked about trying to balance the budget. Wes brought up a few examples. Well, we approved the teachers in February based on what you say we need to try to do this. And it's not going to be for a year and a half later till we find out whether we were successful. So, you know, again, you could, Laura could, you could bring more data, you could do this. But the end of the day, if growth is the thing, we had our best growth before we started lowering the class sizes. So if you look at it from simple math, which I know, I mean, economics, which people don't like to talk to in education. But the fact is, we have to look at that because we have to control our budget, our spend of money is. You know, I'm still not clear on, did lowering the class size really do anything?
I think the only thing that concerns.
As an example.
Yeah, I one hundred percent understand your point. I think the trick with that is if we look back and we see, you know, that our score was higher when we, before we lowered class sizes, let's say we said, okay, let's take a gamble and let's raise them again. That's, that's a year of students that we're taking, we're kind of taking a shot and seeing if.
But if we have four years of data showing we lowered it and it didn't improve to the one before we did it.
But we don't know if lowering it kept us where we were.
That's my point. We keep talking about touchy-feely, maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. Maybe if we look at more data, we'll know more. But again, Laura's point aside, we're looking at what you gave us. And if you just simply look at that chart the way you gave us, the indication would be lowering the class size did not improve growth in our district over the last four years. Now again, maybe there's parts, but.
Right.
If you, if you, if that's the way we're looking at it, it's not accomplished what we. we thought it should accomplish.
What I would encourage you guys to look at is, look at this differently. When we put those growths, those, those goals in place, you know, and I'm going to throw this word out there, and it's not to be negative, but we should treat the 16.6 averages as coming in as remedial, and focus in, and when you, when you use the word remedial, there's a lot of resources put onto that thing. And granted, 16.6 on most people is, is above normal, and that's, that's good. But for our goals, and for our, what we want to shoot for, and move up that 22, 23 historical, maybe we need to use the mindset that that's remedial, and what, what can we do to get those kids by mid-year, freshman year, up to that 17, up to that 18 Explorer score? So their growth in the latter years, you know, is still, you can get the sixth and the seventh growth, because that's, that's what I see. And when they come in at 17, their growths are six-plus all the time. That's what I've seen, at least. So maybe in that mindset of the educator, and I'm not trying to be negative, I'm, I'm 16 is bad, but I'm saying maybe in, in what our goals, we should perceive that as remedial. And when you say remedial, a lot of resources are put in it. And you guys can come to us and say, yeah, we want to bring these kids up within that first six months that they're here. And so we're going to come through with a plan that's going to do this.
Right. And let me say one other thing, too, Kylie, so you know, it's intuitive to me that smaller class size should produce better results. And my kids, we're Riverside District 96, when they were talking about raising a class size, I read a whole bunch of studies on it. And for grammar school, there's a lot of evidence, there isn't for high school unless the studies have changed, right? For certain ages of grammar school, there's a lot of evidence that smaller class sizes make a difference. But the fact is, it doesn't appear to be that that's really producing the result we thought it was. So whether it's Gary's idea or other people's idea is, are we able to, is there other things we should be putting the resources into? Or, you know, is it the teachers? I mean, I was going to ask you, in these classes where we had the big improvements, where there, I know there was a different teacher in AP Earl for last year, and we had a big improvement. So as part of it, do we have the right teachers teaching the classes for the AP, for instance? Or are, and I know you're sending them to be trained, you told those, so, you know, I'm just, the reason I brought class size is because you give us reports and put data on it and numbers, and here's what we have to spend for the, the class size. The other stuff, there's no really, you know, you tell us what it is, but you can't put some value or cost or, or that type of analysis on. You know, if we put $500,000 to this, will it help raise the test scores? But what you have told us is smaller class sizes do it. And based on the data you're providing us, that's not really supporting that, that result, in my opinion, based on this data.
I understand your viewpoint.
Hey, I do want to add another point, we, Tim, that we need to take into account, we're not a magnet school, so our students aren't saying, I want to go to RB, and I want to test, and I have to test in a certain band, otherwise I can't come here. So we get students who are coming to high school, because by law they have to come, and if they don't, their parents get a truant.
So does every public school district except the magnet schools in Chicago.
Right, and the magnet schools where people can self-select. And when we compare ourselves to like Hinsdale Central, that's a self-selection. Their parents are not, the population of those parents don't mirror the population of all our parents. And so we have to take into account that we have some populations, and some kids in our school, they're like, I'm not going to college, or I'm going to have a different kind of business, and that's not my goal, to get a 26 on the SAT. There's a lot of kids who say, if I get a 22, I'm good. And that's all they're going to shoot for. And you're not taking that into account, that some kids choose their own destiny in that way.
You don't think that happens at every other high school in the state, including Hinsdale Central, and like, which was beyond Stevenson? You don't think there's a bunch of kids there who say, I don't care if I only get a 22?
I think disproportionately, I think the number of kids at Stevenson compared to here are not the same.
Well, we don't know whether that's true or not.
See, that's exactly why we got to disaggregate this, and we got to compare the...
Right.
Quartiles or whatever. I mean, if the higher quartiles score higher, which they do, the data says that, one way to increase our ACT, or our average, would be to get all the kids that go to Fenwick, smart kids from Riverside, to come here. Now, how can we, how are we going to convince a parent to do that?
Yeah.
We have to show them data. We have to have the data that shows, you come in here with this, with this score from eighth grade, on average, you're going to score nine points higher, okay? That's the data that's going to count.
Or if the other...
I'm sorry, but...
No, I'm just going to check.
The second point is, in terms of resources, if we're going to pass another referendum, we're going to have to prove to everybody that we're going to put the money where it belongs, and it's going to achieve results. We have to, it can't be just inputs, it's got to be inputs create outputs. So we really have to, if we're going to sell that in the future, we have to show that spending the money is going to work, and we're putting it in the right spot.
Let me respond to your question a different way. If what you're saying is true, our school, we, these kids, they don't care, then why spend the money on it? If that's really, if that's really what you believe, put more money into it, it's not going to change, is it?
There's not all of them.
The numbers say that. I think the numbers say pretty much every 97% of the kids are going to college, right?
95.
95.
95.
Either two-year, four-year, yes.
I mean, that's, there are all those, so they are, they are interested in this test, right?
I think so.
Well, but they're not interested in the 26. I mean, I've got three kids who graduated, and two of them couldn't care less. They got, you know, they're 22, and they're fine. One was, one's an engineer now, and so she was looking for a high score. All these kids have a different goal.
I think if they're just to bring the board...
And I think we need to take that into account.
Bring the board back, though, so Kylie can conclude her report. We're having conversations at the MSJ level, and I think you heard what I said to the board, and said publicly on TV, the goal of the board. And I think I'm, from what I'm hearing, my statement was accurate, that the goal of the board is to want to make sure the resources that we're putting into the budget, and where we're, we're making our investment is producing a return.
Yes.
And so, as you saw with the SAT data, and what they're already starting to break down, we're starting to go into that lower 20, 30% that aren't making it, and we're starting to look for patterns and figuring out what we need to bring back to you, to say, either their graduation requirements need to change, or we need to adopt this course, or this intervention. So we're, we're on that. And we'll, we'll get the breakdown on the ACT data for you by quartile or quintile. And, you know, I don't want to get lost in this discussion. This was our best year for AP scores. Not only that, but including number of kids taking the test, and the number of kids getting a three or better. It was our best, if not second-best year in all of our growth, in all of our... So I mean, we're doing some good things. I think it's the way, again, we tell our story. And it goes to your point, and we can't say we have an increasing trend if we have a flat trend. So we'll continue to work on that. But I think also what some of the board members are saying in the second term, it's been four or five years now charting this data, we need to, we need to take it to the next level now, and start looking at specific interventions that are going to produce specific, specific outcomes, okay? So we'll continue to talk and work on it, we'll bring the Advisory Council in once we think we have some things ready to propose. And so before we get to the staffing and attendance projections, we'll do those in November, so, but that's just projections. But once we get to staffing in February, March, we should have an idea of some things that we need to focus on, or continue doing, okay? Is the board okay with that? There's one additional report in the packet, and I don't think it needs discussion, it's there for you. Somebody asked for the historical college readiness data, and I think it will show, you know, pretty much, it just breaks down by feeder school, the average Explorer score, the average ACT score, average growth. It's very consistent to RB's average. And so the thing that we need to do next, and in the future, is just do that breakdown so we can identify how we close that achievement gap, from where they come in to where they leave.
Well, thanks for willing to be on the hot seat and asking our questions. I think it's because we all have the same goal of trying to improve these scores and improve the kids' outcomes. So thank you for putting our best...
You're doing a great job, Kylie, keep it up.
Thank you.
We'll give you a break before you got to come back to the board, but you have... Scott, the seat's nice and warm for you now, buddy. Chief Financial Officer report.
Okay. In your board packets, I'll be highlighting the August financials. The reports always start with, the monthly report is highlighting revenue expense for that current month, followed by the financials. I updated the financials with the new budget amounts that were approved at the last meeting, so you can see where we stand after two months. Also in your agenda packet is the revenue expense report, that's given every month. If you have any questions on that, items, please, you know, send the questions, so I can clarify. Student activity account is outlined in there for the month of August. There were four accounts that were negative in there. I'll say three out of the four accounts by next month, once we readjust all the registration fees, should be back positive. Some of them, you know, they're not, the highest one negative is $927 for alumni achievement. That hopefully will be going back in with the thinner that just had. Maybe there'll be some proceeds that go back in to lower that balance that's negative.
Were there questions submitted on your reports, Scott?
There was one on the revenue expense in the capital section, that's under Fund 60.
Page number?
53. Is it 53? Okay. That is reimbursable conditions that are out there. I went through the different items that are out there. There is one that is miscoded. For Oz Engineering, it fell into there for about three, I think it's about $3,500. It should be under professional services. It will be journal-adjusted and put into the correct line item.
It'll be miscellaneous professional services?
Yes. But that doesn't...
Still what?
Apply. There still is, that, that account there is over budget. The other piece that is big there, under there, was Compass Surveying. Compass Surveying pretty much was out there doing the parking lot and tennis courts, staking everything for the layout on that. There was a reimbursable condition from Nicholas, submitted for roughly $10,000 on that one, which...
So, I mean, it could have easily gone into miscellaneous professional services.
It could have.
Because Compass is the surveyor, so anytime we, when we've settled the lawsuit, did any of the changes, or, or any of the grades, they have to come out, resurvey to get the specs and grades, so that easily could have. And then Oz Engineering is the third-party engineer that we employ as the district to make sure all of our cement, gravel...
Surfaces, everything.
Sub-surfaces are tested and up to code, right? So I mean, he's, both of those, both of those easily could have, could have addressed the miscellaneous professional services. What was the, what were the other items in the 75, of the 7,500? Or is it just Compass and Oz?
Compass, Oz, and then your routine things of service on the porta-potties.
Okay. Okay.
Also attached is the updated finance tracking documents. Those are from August all the way until September 12th, updated. We're getting closer to finishing up on the payments on that. I wanted to make sure that everything is close. I'm hopefully generating a report coming soon. Once I get in some final pay apps, that will be able to determine where we're standing as far as all the construction projects go.
You're going to provide magnifying glasses?
Yes, Scott.
What we might, what we might need to do, we might need to collapse some, we might need to collapse some...
The problem with that one is, you know, they wanted to have it expand for the three years, and to try to fit it on one page so everyone can see it, I totally understand.
Keep it, keep it tracking on the three years, but eventually when we do the final, I'm sure, just as the budget has driven the discussion the last few months, when Phase Three is completely done and sign off, okay? And, and the board's done, they're going to want to see in the bottom right-hand corner what that project completely cost, minus the life safety money, you know, to, so that they can say to the public, yes, we received 8.9, we only spent this much on that project. And then we spent this much on the, you know, so they could show that we got as much value out of that $8.9 million grant that we received, okay? So if we need to shrink a couple roles or write a summary, maybe combining all these on a cover page, once the projects are all complete, that will, that will be helpful for the board, and it's helpful to put on the webpage as well, right? This could be the backup data, and then you have your summary that...
No, I totally understand. I know it's tiny, and you got to blow it up to 200 to see it.
Were there any other questions on those, Scott?
Not, not on those. Like you said, we're getting closer on the roof, too. Punch list items are being done. So another pay app did come in, board will be saying that at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then the last thing on the report is the current FY '18 administrative compensation report. And also attached is the certified staff compensation report. These must be presented to the board annually for review, and then they need to be posted on the website before October 1st.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. There are no other questions, correct?
No.
Submitted? All right.
Do we have any visitors' comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to open up for discussion items. So at this point, Board of Education members may request to add an additional discussion item. Look to my left, anyone want to add an item? To my right?
I just want to say my comment, I didn't get to say it last time.
Somebody said it for you.
I, I, Laura...
Oh, did you say it?
I told them that, I think the reason you asked for that agenda item was that, or the comment item was that the facility, the request was to open the facility for the public, and we're seeing people trying to sneak their bikes on the track, or...
And I just wanted to thank the junior bulldog coaches, and wanted to thank them publicly for watching and taking care of the facilities, they use it, and remind everybody, please, we want to take care of the track. John would have a heart attack if he saw that bicycle going around the track. So, yeah, we want to have this for a long time. Everybody, we need everybody's eyes on it, and, you know, protect it.
Police Department, ready?
No update at this time. I, we still have an error word from the chief, and then there's an item in closed session we're discussing in regard to safety with radios and stuff.
All right, old business, life safety items, capital improvements?
No update, we provided a, during the superintendent's report.
Press Plus Policy Issue 95.
This is technically the board's second read, but first read with our changes submitted. And there were a few minor changes, and I believe there was maybe one question, but most of the changes were focused on just implementing the word superintendent or designee to be consistent with our other policies. There were no other major changes. There was one question that I would assume the board may ask, and that was with our current website, making sure it's up to ADA compliance, and we do have a certificate that, that we're, we are meeting compliance with the accessibility. And there's a new policy in this Press Plus packet.
Are we okay to vote on this?
Well, I had one comment on 6210, and we inserted a sentence that's already addressed in there. It's not the end of the world, but the second of new sentence also...
Which page is it in?
It's on page 85.
6210, so we adopted the optional?
Yeah, you said as presented.
Right.
So that's, so the second sentence in the main paragraph under instruction says, "No R-rated movie shall be shown to students unless prior approval is received from the superintendent designee and parental permission is obtained." And then we're inserting a new sentence, "Superintendent designee shall give parents guardians an opportunity to request that child not participate in a class shown in a movie, television program, or other media within our equivalent rating." Isn't that saying the same thing as the second sentence? You have to give parental permission for R-rated movies? I mean, it's not the end of the world, the board then twice, but I'm going to raise the question, are you looking for something different there?
Is that the footnote that they're just saying? Oh, I see what you're saying. I, I don't know, that was the edit provided by the policy service, we didn't put that in there.
I know.
So you're saying it's repetitive?
Well, one is saying they're giving, one is saying they're giving permission, and the other one's saying they can opt out. It's the same idea.
That's my point.
Yeah.
They intend to mean something different, because I wouldn't read them differently. So then people are going to ask, did you mean something different between the two between the two sentences?
I think is the second, isn't that last sentence still saying they can get an alternate assignment? Not participate in classroom?
That's in the middle. But I feel like the first part is that in order to even show it in the first place, they have to get approval. Is that what it means, to show it in the first place and then kids can opt out?
Yes, I think that's right. So, why do you have to have parent permission?
Oh, no. That would just be superintendent's permission, if it was like just to show it in the first place.
That's the point. If they're intending for them to meet something different, I don't know what it is. And if they're not, like, put it down twice.
I don't know.
Well, their comment says it's best practice in that little box.
Well, allow a parent guardian to opt out.
It's not a legal requirement.
It's best practice, but if you need parental permission and the parental doesn't give permission, they're opting out. That's the point.
Is that, is this a trend? Are they trying to clarify that specifically for a parent to know that, yeah, we're not gonna grant permission, but there's also this concept of opting out. You can actually have, you know...
That's redundant, but...
You wanna pull this one out and look at it?
No, I mean, it's not.
I just think it's gonna make it one way or the other. I'm gonna be the one that's gonna...
We're not changing anything anyway, are we?
No.
Should, should, are we okay to vote on this stuff? All right.
Or if, or if the board wants, we could just put it in the consent agenda next meeting.
Whatever.
What do you guys wanna do? Vote on it?
Either way, it's fine.
Okay. Somebody do, read the resolution then?
I'll read it. Resolve that the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-A, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves IASB Press Plus Policy Issue Ninety-Five as presented in the September twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen Board Agenda Packet.
Second?
Second.
Tim, Mr. Walsh. All right. Go for the vote.
Mr. Rosca?
Yes.
Dr. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Kylie, you're back. Maybe we should just have you attend these meetings regularly then.
Well, that's not good.
All right. Course title change is curriculum guide, so this is the first read for the board. The board, for the new board members, the Board of Education will approve this at the first meeting in October. Whenever there's a curriculum change or a title change, the practice has been the board approves these. And then the curriculum guide goes out to incoming students and returning students at the end of October. So, even though we're just in the first quarter of the school year, we already have to start planning for our next school year.
So, we have two items on this list. One is a course title change. Currently, we offer a course called Music Creativity, and we have a proposed course title change to move that title to Studio Music Production. What we've found out is that in Music Creativity, we're not really capturing for students that when you go into this class, you actually get to produce your own music and learn what that is about. And that is really the basis of what we're doing in that course, so we wanna make sure that students understand that when they're taking it. And we feel like that more appropriately captures why a student would want to be enrolled in such a course. So, that is something that we have approved at the Leadership Council level. Additionally, we had a proposal out of our Fine Arts Department for a course called Rock Band. Rock Band is envisioning being a course that a student could take multiple times because it can build on skill. It has no prerequisite. Students are not required to have any instruments. We have the instruments here. And our Fine Arts, specifically our Music Department, is really looking to reach more of our student population and bring more of our student population into the arts, specifically the music arts. And so, they feel very strongly that this genre is an untapped genre that could reach some of our students who have typically not been involved in music courses. So, not a student who has been playing violin since they were five, but a student who maybe decides when they come into high school that they wanna try their hand at music and see what that's about. And this being a course that would be accessible for them, to allow them to do this. If these courses are approved, they're courses that would go into, the changes would go into our curriculum guide, but of course, they would be dependent on numbers and enrollment on whether or not those courses would run.
And how do we know if we have a teacher that's qualified to teach this Rock Band class?
Teacher wrote it.
Right. So, proposals for...
I could write that, then. I can't play an instrument at all.
Well, he's got a music cert. You want me to teach the class?
He trusts that our, that our band director is talented, and we've seen him at work. So, we feel confident that should this class run, he would be able to teach that and give kids a really rewarding experience there.
I've seen James play multiple instruments.
Textbook. Well, they, also, we have jazz band here, which this is just almost a branch off of that.
Yeah, in a way.
More guitar bass.
In a way, yes.
Drums.
I actually think it's part of his degree that he has to play multiple instruments.
He's certified. He's good for it.
Yeah, I have to imagine that that was something that...
All right, Kylie, you got the three-year textbook to plan, and we need to make sure the board understands there's not an emergency.
Thank you.
Even though I make you use those words when you try to spend money for me, then maybe I clarify for the board, 'cause I didn't get a question. Why is there an emergency? It's not technically an emergency.
Thank you for saying that. So, the textbook adoption plan that was originally in the board book was a thirteen-year English teacher, now curriculum director's attempt at being a finance person. And as one of the board members noticed, I went all the way down, I guess. As one of the board members noticed, there were a few errors in there. So, my apologies, you are getting an updated version. Fortunately, I married a director of finance, so I now know what it means when numbers don't foot at the end. And I think he maybe got a little too much of a kick out of doing a brief Accounting One-O-One at nine o'clock last night. So, I've adjusted the numbers. Mary Ann has been kind enough to put them in the board book for me so that the updated version is on the screen. And you now have an updated version in front of you so that you can take a look. This is a three-year plan that you have seen before, but what I wanna do is prepare you for what's coming in January, which is when we bring proposals in for new textbooks. When I come back in January, that FY eighteen is gonna fall off, and I'm gonna replace it with FY twenty-one so that we can see those new requests coming in. What I tried to do for FY eighteen is take a look at what we projected that we were going to spend and what we were going to recover versus the actual, and then show you the difference between the two. It seems like it would make sense, but when you're used to reading a lot, it does, you'll see. That's why there were some errors there. But you can see that our projection for FY eighteen actually was higher than where we actually came in by nine thousand and some change. I'm sorry, by eight thousand and some change. So, those are just an update of, this is what we told you, we were thinking, here's where we actually ended up.
So, we projected after student fees eighty-one thousand. The actual came out to be seventy-two-five.
Yes.
So, we were roughly a difference of about eight, almost nine thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, those...
Your emergencies in FY nineteen, correct?
So, those emergencies, my apologies for the, for the nomenclature there. We have a couple of requests that have come in where our instructional coaches are requesting that we amend the textbook plan based on needs in their course. Spanish, in particular, is one where the current book that our Spanish courses are using is completely out of print. And beginning, we were able to hang on to the online resources for that textbook for this year. At the end of this year, those will be gone. So, we will be in a situation where if we run out of textbooks, if we have textbooks that are damaged and we need to replace them, or if we wanna be able to use any of the online resources in any of our Spanish classes, that will not be possible if we don't move forward and adopt a new series because those, we found out this year, are going to be going out of print. So, that is where that Spanish one request comes in and why we were trying to get the board's approval to amend that already in-place textbook plan. You'll see that Spanish two shows up in FY twenty. Spanish three would show up in FY twenty-one because we're talking about courses that have a continual series of books, so all of their resources are gonna be gone. The U.S. Government course, we are working, our most current U.S. Government book is from two thousand and eleven, so we're looking at some pretty significant policy changes and information that is not available currently in our current text that we're using. U.S. Gov is a graduation requirement, and we feel that we want our students to be able to have the most updated information. Also, going into adopting a new U.S. Government textbook would bring in an online component which is non-existent now, so we don't have the ability to access content and support through our one-to-one devices. So, that is where that request is coming in. And that, there will be a little bit more color to that when I actually present the full requests in January. This was just trying to look at a snapshot of cost. There was a question about why there were no fees recovered in that FY nineteen. Typically, recovering fees has only been done when we're talking about consumables. So, when we talk about our Carnegie Learning courses that have workbooks attached to them and students take them and they write in them, and they're not reusable, that's something that gets translated into student fees. In that FY nineteen, there isn't anything there that translates into student fees. It has not ever been our practice to pass student fees associated with online licenses for textbooks onto students. So, that's why you're not going to see anything recovered there because none of the resources in that list are consumable.
Global Area Studies in FY twenty, one hundred and twenty textbooks. Is there a reason that we're going buying so many and not just classroom sets?
So, that's something that I'm working with right now. The same woman that's giving our U.S. Government quote, we can pull from that same company, and I'm waiting on some information from her because we want to make sure that we have the ability to pull the licenses and not just the textbooks. What I notice...
Why would we need one hundred and twenty, though, Kylie, of textbooks? Is that, are you planning on giving, having one for every student, or?
Yes. When we originally did the plan, yeah, we were looking at our enrollment, and so we were projecting one for each student. So, now we're taking a look at, and sometimes it's offered both ways. So, for example, the U.S. Gov information I just got updated today is that we can get the book and the license, and it comes as one thing anyway. So, I'm working on what will that look like in Global Area Studies as we move more toward really trying to depend on those one-to-one resources.
Also, when you project that far out, you don't necessarily have a textbook identified 'cause that was done back in fiscal, that was done last year.
Yes.
And so, when you're looking three years out, we typically don't have a textbook identified that we are gonna purchase in three years because that can change. So, that's just interesting.
I just wanna make sure we're consistent to the goal we sold to the board three years ago of classroom set.
Yes.
Textbook license for everybody. So, that should be more like thirty Global Area Studies and one hundred and twenty licenses as we go forward.
On the same note, it seems like one hundred and ninety U.S. Government. If all the students, they, they can't opt out by taking like AP US or something. There's ways you can get out of U.S. Government.
Sure. Yes.
But more, if one ninety, that's, you're getting more for some, like, Spanish two, you're getting more. Like, it seems like a lot more people take U.S. Government.
Yeah.
It's a semester course.
Right.
Oh, so it's like twice. Okay, so three, it's more of like three. Okay, that makes sense. Can you go back to the fees? Because, again, not to pick on you because of math, but in the current year, we're saying we budgeted fourteen thousand, we only collected thirty-four hundred. Why was that?
So, I, that had to have been an error on my part last year when we presented this because I scoured all of my notes to figure out how we got that fourteen thousand, and I couldn't find it. So, I think that was an error on the backend, thinking that with our Read One-Eighty Universal, the cost of the R-books that come with that, we're gonna be included in that upfront cost, and that's not the case. It's something, that's something that happens year over year. So, that was a miscalculation on my part.
So, the, the student recovery fees, you have a fiscal nineteen, that's only for the items that are in the list for fiscal nineteen?
Correct. Yes.
But then we go into fiscal twenty, and we're saying that the four-year average was forty, or the total was forty-three thousand, means five-year average, excuse me, was eight thousand six hundred, but...
So, what I noticed...
Last year's?
Right. So, what I noticed last night in my math lesson was that I had put, when we, when we approved this plan last year, on the average, the fees that were collected for FY twenty, I had the total, the total cost of the fees that were collected over the life of the five-year license.
Okay.
So, what I had to do when I was adjusting was adjust what I called it. It's the average annual amount recovered through student fees. So, I had to take that forty-three thousand and some and divide it out by the five years, which is why that question came up about why we were incurring all of that, or we were trying to recover all of that in one year. That was an error. So, I had to, I had to move that out. So, that's another reason why those numbers adjusted.
And then go to the last one, then. How'd we come up with twelve thousand for three years, then, if it's eight thousand six hundred a year for five?
Which number? Are you talking about the blue?
No, I don't, no, I'm talking about the last red, the last one where you have proximal recover from student fees over life of three-year plan, twelve thousand, twenty-four, twenty?
So, that reflects this three-year plan that you're seeing, so FY eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. So, I took that eight thousand dollars from twenty and added it with this year's.
I got it. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Course fees.
All right. So, I have course fees. And...
Good night, Kylie.
Good night, Kylie.
Thank you.
Let the wind...
Thank you.
So, these are a list of proposed course fees for the eighteen, nineteen school year. The reason you're seeing them now as a first read, you'll vote in October, is because these also go in the curriculum guide, and so they're available to parents when they register for courses. Students register, they can see the course fee associated with them as well. So, they are organized by course fees that we're recommending an increase, course fees that are recommending a decrease, and then courses that are staying the same. You'll notice that a lot of the increases, all at the bottom, are just an increase in an AP fee of one dollar to help cover the cost of proctors for those tests and renting tables that are associated with them. They have very strict guidelines for taking an AP test. The only question that was submitted was in regards to the AP French fee. So, the reason that is significantly higher than ninety-five dollars is due to the resource that they use. And they use a Pearson workbook, which contains a series of practice tests for them. And so, students use that. In addition to, there's audio files that come with the workbook, and the teacher uploads them to Schoology, and so students can then go on the Schoology page and listen to the audio files and practice that way as well. Are there any other questions regarding course fees?
I don't know. If we're moving more towards online books, we may have to start to consider students contributing a little bit towards that license because they're not buying the books anymore.
Well, if you think, we haven't debated it yet because they're paying for half of the Chromebook. So, I don't know. I thought you were gonna say if we, as we move more towards online, we should look and see if there's ways of lowering course fees for parents with consumables like workbooks or things that they're writing in so that they can do more stuff online.
But the workbooks are cheap. They're like fifteen dollars or so. But if you do...
These are all expenses, though. I mean, parents are technically, unless you're on free or reduced lunch, your free public education still costs you about five hundred dollars a year.
At least.
Okay, a lot more than that.
My kid's here with my grand contract.
Let's do it in the air.
Currently, unless it's a workbook, students don't pay for textbooks either. So, that's why we just went over the textbook plan.
Is the textbook exclusive to where, or does that, like, license renew the next year then for the next kid, like a textbook would?
Well, it depends on, it depends on the agreement. So, usually, they're four or five years, and so we have them for four or five years.
So, it's spread over several years, Laura. It's not one kid for that license. I understand what you're asking. So, like, when you buy a textbook, as long as a kid returns his textbook, that's why we never charge for textbooks. They're technically doing the same thing with that license.
Yeah, 'cause we're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars on the budget for next year.
Well, not really, because if you look at, we projected, I think we budgeted close to ninety-five. We're projecting right now, even with the two emergencies, one oh seven. So, you're talking only twenty thousand.
If you pick one of the new ones up, like Spanish one, there's a hundred and eighty online licenses that are good for four years. We're paying twenty-six thousand, so it's sixty-five hundred dollars a year for a hundred and eighty. That's about fifty dollars a license a year or something, somewhere, maybe thirty dollars a license a year.
What do we pay for the old Spanish textbook?
I don't know.
My guess...
More than that.
My guess would be sixty to a hundred, maybe more.
Yeah. Right, there's some savings.
So, if you're paying less for the license than you are for the actual...
Hard book. Plus, it's updated. The license gets updated with...
Yes.
It could be updated tomorrow, in the day after, in the day after.
Yeah. They started to catch on real quick when everybody went to iPads and Chromebooks, and they were losing money.
Okay.
All right. So, we'll approve this at the next meeting. The board's okay. We'll see it one more time. All right.
Move to matters for closed session. Personnel, student discipline, individual student managed purchase or lease of real property, probable intimate impending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety. Somebody read the resolution, please?
Resolve the Board of Education Township High School District Two-O-A, Cook County, Illinois, enter this closed session where purpose considered appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body. Student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable...
Student discipline, purchase or lease of real property, probable imminent or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second.
Can we go for the vote, Mary?
Dr. King?
Yes.
Sierra?
Yes.
Yes.
Towner?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh? Yes.
Rosca? Yes.
Yes. All right. So, the second chance for visitors to make comments. Um, nobody out there, so we will move on to, uh, any discussion items that were requested? None? All right.
Wait, wait. Here's a, I can add a discussion item.
All right.
I read in the paper about, uh, the Department of Education is giving out two-hundred million dollars in computer science grants, something of that effect. Are we looking into that?
We don't have a grant writer, so I would say right now we probably not.
Well, we've got a great computer science program going, so...
Yeah, I just, uh, we haven't, we haven't sat down and asked about any of the grants. We're adding courses and we got kids going to workshops, but I haven't looked into any grants.
Just, I don't have a great thing yet.
Okay. I can check with Sandy and see if there's anything else.
All right.
We have to have a motion for...